Well, hello, everybody. And the council president's about 10 minutes out, but we're going to go ahead and get started. I want to welcome all of you here. And I've got just a couple of kind of tee off remarks, but first, this is a council meeting, and a meeting of the library board. So I'm going to ask the clerk to call the role for the city council.
Corless.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Stud.
Here.
Willett.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
Clerk may also have a roll call for the trustees of the Boise Public Library, please.
Kamal. Clenny.
Here.
Lemons.
Here.
Pantera.
Here.
Pizanowski.
Here.
All present.
Wonderful. I am really looking forward to this conversation today. This is the first time that we've been together as a Board of Trustees in the city council to have a discussion about what's happening right now in the libraries and where we might be headed. And so really look forward to this, this time that we have together. I first want to say, though, thank you to the Board of Trustees. The, it's, it's become even more encompassing than we expected and than you expected, I imagine, when you said yes to my invitation to serve. I really appreciate your attention to the programs that this library provides, the needs that our residents have, and the, and the needs that the library has to, in order to meet those and provide service. And I also want to acknowledge in these tough times when there's even more that you're being asked to do, such as look at books and help the library make calls in a rather polarized environment, you've really stood up and leaned in and helped us with that. So thank you for that. And I, I know it, it takes a lot, both time wise, as well as mentally, for all of the service that you provide, and just want to acknowledge that. And I also want to thank Jessica, of course, as director, and our library team that's here. And please extend it to the rest of your team as well, how much I appreciate the community care you've demonstrated, the leadership that you're providing on a daily basis, and ultimately, the service that you provide to our residents. They really appreciate it. I hear it all the time, deeply appreciate it and know that when they walk in one of our buildings, they're going to be able, they will be helped, whether it be just as simple as finding a book, but most often, much more complicated in terms of helping connect with resources and, and explore the, the questions and needs that they have. So thank you very much. And with that, I will pass this over to Courtney to provide an overview of the day. And then, a lot of this is going to be the President Lemmons. I can just say chair, so I have to make sure I say the right thing. And Jessica Dorr guiding the conversation, sharing some information, asking questions, and then really look forward to this being a conversation amongst all of us while we have this opportunity. So thank you.
Before I get started, Madam President, did you want to make some opening comments?
I would. Thank you so much, Courtney. Thank you as well, Mayor and Council. We'll circle back in a moment. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting us today. This is the first for our board, for meeting many of you and getting to interact with you. So we appreciate your time and attention today to talk about some really important and exciting updates that we have. As Boise is growing, so are we as a library system. So we're really thrilled to talk about that today. We really appreciate your leadership and support as we look forward into this discussion. We really are interested in deepening our partnership and our connections with each of you and giving you a glimpse into what's happening behind the scenes. I know that the five of us joined the Boise Public Library because we love it. We stand behind the mission and the values. And as Mayor alluded to, there's been a, a lot more than we anticipated in the last few years, but we stand strong in our commitment to the city of Boise and its residents and assuring that they have access to the resources that they need through the services that the library can provide. We really, excuse me, we really appreciate how you and the council have been incredibly supportive of increased investment, increased staffing, materials. Again, as Boise grows, we grow. So this has been really important to us to deepen our impact. And impact is something that our board has been deeply focused on in the last years. But really, we're interested in how can we provide more books, more resources to more people and more places? And I think that's what you'll see with some of the updates that we'll be providing you with today. Your openness to innovation is deeply important to us. So you'll see, we'll have a lot of conversations about flexibility and leaning into growth and how can we best serve the residents of this community. But before we get into that, I am going to read just a little bit because I have some appreciation and acknowledgement that I would like to share. We could not do what we do in the library without the support of many, many departments within the city. So I just want to acknowledge a few of the things and a few of the staff that have really contributed to our success over the last few years. So first, I'd like to acknowledge the facilities team for keeping our five locations safe and clean and welcoming and accessible. We've been doing deep, deep work to make sure that everyone has opportunity to access our library spaces. To IT, keeping our computers and our systems running for staff and the public. That is no short feat and heavily utilized. To finance, for helping make sure the library has the resources it needs to have impact. And also personally, for meeting with us as library board members to help us understand the intricate mechanisms of library and city budgeting. So thank you for that. Security, for helping us provide safe, welcoming spaces to everyone. We are proud to be that safe space for community. To community engagement, for helping us promote the amazing resources that we have to the library and also for telling the story of library joy. I think this last year, we hear a lot about libraries, and I would like us to hear more about the joy and the resources that we're able to provide. To legal, to help us understand the legal framework of library operations. I'm going to do a special shout out to Ed Jewell. He's on paternity leave right now, but Ed has walked us through and spent much, much time with us, a lot in this last year. So I just want to acknowledge his incredible work and support. Team and Resources, helping us hire and retain incredible staff. We are very lucky to have an amazing team in Boise. To Government Affairs, who has also been very active with us in the last two years for helping us advocate for the library. And to Arts and History and Parks and Rec, to partner with library staff on programs for the public. There is really no city department that I don't think we touch in some way, shape, or form. So I'm just really grateful for the time and expertise and the resources that the city staff share with us. As Mayor mentioned, this has been a challenging time for public libraries, not just here in Idaho, but across the country with increasing threats to access to materials and resources and stories. And as a board, we have taken this issue deeply, deeply seriously and spent much of our time and resources, understanding, investing, and making sure that we are upholding the laws as they are written. This is really deeply necessary work. But I don't want the issue of book challenges to be what we're focused on today. Again, I mentioned library joy and how can we serve more people in more places? And so that's what we're really thrilled to talk with you about. So I'm excited to talk about the opportunity to create this new facilities plan that we're going to go through with you, building upon and deepening our library's impact. Thank you again for helping us deepen this partnership, and I look forward to engaging in some discussion with you all. Thank you, President. Before Courtney jumps in, let's just go around the room and do introductions since this is the first time that we've sat together. Laura McLean.
I'm Courtney Washburn. I'm the Chief of Staff for the city.
Colin Nash, Boise City Council.
Brian Pizanowski, I'm the Vice President of the Board of Library.
Jimmy Halliburton, Boise City Council. It's good to see everyone. I think it's been about a year since I've shared a board meeting with you. So, so wonderful to be back with all of you again.
Nicole Pantera.
Kathy Corless, Boise City Council and District Three on the bench.
I'm Lindsay Erb. I'm with Public Works. I'm the Senior Facility Program Manager.
Jordan Morales, Boise City Council, District Four, Southeast Boise and the Vista Bench.
Lucy Willetts, Boise City Council, District One, West Boise.
Brian Clenny.
Meredith Stud, Boise City Council, District Five, North and East Ends Downtown.
And I'm Jessica Dorr, I'm the Director of the Boise Public Library.
And Rebecca Lemmons, President of the Boise Public Library Board of Trustees.
Well, good morning, everyone. We're really excited to have you all here. We think this is going to be a great opportunity for collaboration between both of the decision-making bodies. I'm just going to go over the agenda, and then I'll kick us off, and then I'll turn it over to Jessica to get into the information about community feedback, current trends, and system changes. We're, we're really hoping to get out of today is that everyone leaves with the same information and a similar understanding of the lay of the land. And also, our best aid would be to facilitate discussion between you all about issues or concerns or celebrations you may have regarding the library system. So we're in a better position to follow up and make sure the product the library is working on meets the expectation of both of the decision-making arms. I'm very excited to be here today, but I do have a conflict at 11:00, so I'm going to swap out. It's, it's just a conflict. Nothing bad is happening. And so with that, I want to just touch on this overview. We are going to update you all on the work that's been done to date on the new facilities plan, shared trends, community feedback, and system changes. And as I mentioned before, really gather input from the council and the board to shape the upcoming work and deliverables. Our products are always better when we start with a common understanding rather than waiting till the end. And we're super excited that so many people enjoy our library system, and we have some real opportunities for growth moving forward. I did just want to point out, if you could switch the slide, Jessica, because I don't have the thing, the unique relationship between the two decision-making bodies. I know this, and Jessica certainly knows this, and I'm sure all of you do, but it is not, I think, well-known that the library board is set up in state statute, and its directive is to set policy for the operation of the Boise Library. And the library boards are responsible for decisions rather than advisory boards in some of the cases we have throughout the city. And the city council's library role is mainly budget oversight, city leadership, the establishment and funding of libraries. So the library system is regulated by the legislature and the state, not locally. So with that, I did want to touch on what you do have in common. I thought it was an interesting exercise to pull both the mission of the city and the mission of the Boise Public Library. You'll see there are a whole lot of similarities in these mission statements, which is a great, great thing. It truly shows, I think, that the North Star between the library system and the city is truly community service for everyone. So it'd be great to keep that sentiment in mind as we go through this process, that our library system is loved, we're trying to create opportunities for everyone to access the system they like. And this is just a really unique opportunity to have a discussion on, on what the potential is in the future. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jessica Dorr to go through some information with you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the board, thank you, Courtney. I am very excited to be here with you and really have been looking forward to this discussion and bringing the leadership of the board and leadership of the city to talk about the Boise Public Library and its potential for impact. To do that, I'm going to really take a moment to talk about my tenure. I have just completed four years at the helm of the Boise Public Library, and it has been a true honor to lead this organization at such an important time in the city and in the library's history. I want to talk about the two things that really I've been focused on, and we as a leadership team and a board have been focused on, and really is that, how are we making sure that we have impact in the community? So in the remarks that I'm going to share with you, trying to build that common understanding to make sure that you have that baseline that you can use in your conversation, I really want to focus on the impact that we've been really wanting to make sure that we have in the community. And in that, there's been two major efforts that we've undertaken. One is the reinvestment in the downtown library, and the other one is really setting a new direction. So as you, as both board and council know, we have been bringing to you for approval in every budget year since 2020, really major investments in the downtown library to catch up on deferred maintenance. Rebecca mentioned really making sure that that facility is ADA accessible. I like to joke about how beautiful Chief Niemeyer thinks our new fire pump is. I hope we never get to see it in action, but it is really those necessary investments to protect that structure, which is so heavily used. At the same time, we've really been thinking about that impact, and how can we make sure that we have a strategic plan that sets the direction for programs and services for the library? So one of the things that we did as a board, it really started in 2022 and was approved in 2024 with the start of the 2024 fiscal year, was to create our strategic framework for impact to really oversee programs and services for '24 to '29. And that really was a strategic framework that was created with community impact. So you'll see that theme of how we're listening to the community and how we're reflecting the community priorities and how we're aligning our services in support of community needs. I'm going to call out two pieces of that, of our strategic priorities, because you'll see them as themes that were reconfirmed in the work that we've done to date with our facilities planning. And really, those are expanding access and increasing our impact. So those are two of our four tenets. And those were things that we heard directly from the community, expanding access in terms of people, how many programs and services, how many materials, how many locations we have for the library, but then also really increasing our community impact. And the most important piece in that community feedback that we got on that, you'll hear this as a theme throughout, is really where the library has expected to lead in the community, which is really that early childhood education, literacy, lifelong learning. Every survey that we've ever had from the community has reinforced the expectation that the library is a central community organization that is supporting literacy and learning. And then after that, a real clear message from the community about our role in strengthening community connections and helping people find resources that will help them, maybe something that we're not leading on, but how are we supporting job development? How are we supporting small businesses? How are we supporting health, mental health services? That support role, that is something that the, that the community really appreciates that we do, but also expects us to do. So with that, I want to move into some of the trends in library usage that I think have really shaped the discussions that we've had as a board, as a library leadership, and that I think are really important for the discussion that you'll have. So what we know about current library usage, the first off, library usage continues to increase. When I started my career as a library professional, there was a lot of thought about, well, everything's moving digital, do people still use or need libraries? There is a resounding yes in the number of people who walk into our facilities every day or the number of people who access our facilities online every day. So we, I want to talk about how that question should be put to bed. But what we are seeing is that increased use and the fact that users want more flexibility and convenience, and they're moving across formats and locations, really in sophisticated ways. They're also increasingly accessing our digital content and using it. Different groups are using digital content in different ways. We'll talk more about that. And they really are expecting that the library steps up. This is a moment that libraries can really excel at. We've got a, a economy that requires digital skills. We've got education that requires digital access, and we've got a perfect community institution that this is the moment to really make sure we are evolving to meet the needs and expectations of our community. I want to talk a little bit more about library usage, because I think this will reinforce some of the points of, I think, as Rebecca mentioned, as Boise grows, the library is growing. This is a wonderful chart that was put together by our new data analyst. This is a position that council funded last year that we are really taking advantage of. The work that James Satter has done is embedded throughout this presentation. You will see the bar chart shows the last three years. The dark blue is the current year. The lighter blue is previous year and the year before. This is the, look at the trends on this. Everything is going up. This is our in-person usage. This looks the same in our programs. This looks the same in our program attendance. This looks the same in the circulation. We are seeing month over month increases, year over year increases. And as I mentioned, people are moving around for, to access materials or they're doing things online. The image on the right is a capture. We, we captured a random month this year of where people with library cards were going to different libraries, and you see a quite wide range. And what we've noticed is that people are comfortable moving to a location. There, there aren't places where people don't necessarily, they, they like their closest location. But man, if they've got, if there's a program at one location that they want to attend, people in Boise will move quite a bit. We've also noticed, particularly this year, when-
I just want to ask that question in a different way to make sure that I understand, we all understand. So what you're saying is that folks don't necessarily identify with like their neighborhood library. I, you know, I live in Bound, so my library is Bound Crossing. But I see a program on Collister that looks interesting because I've looked, and so I'm going to go anyway, even though I live nearby.
That's the user behavior that we see. Thank you for that question.
Just to expand on that a little bit more, what I'm seeing with this up here as well is that we may have quite a few folks coming from Meridian, Eagle, Ada County, using not just our downtown library, but a lot of the different libraries as well. Is that-
That is correct. And that you see, you know, we are one member of the Library Links Consortium and have a real benefit in library, you know, the reciprocal borrowing that we have. So our library users may be going to Ada, or they may be going to Meridian. There's a lot of patterns of where people are picking up a book and dropping it off at a different location based on maybe their commute or where they're taking children to school. I think I've got a couple of trustees to talk about. I, this is the closest library, but I'm going over to a ballet class, and I'm going to go. So there's a lot of usage about convenience, and we really see that in particularly the ability to be part of the Links Consortium where we are moving materials around. And we do have a real open door policy in terms of serving other library users. It works, those libraries will be, you know, people from other cities will come use our libraries and vice versa. And then I want to just point out the, we've got some great, we saw such an increase in library usage on our website after the April 1st launch of the new library website. Have some great data that we're starting to track over that. And you'll see after our homepage, the most, the three most visited pages of the library, number one, digital resources. Again, I think it speaks to that convenience. The locations and events, people want to go to programs. And then how to get a library card, and that made me really happy. Put that one in.
Madam Mayor, Director, two questions. I was curious about the October spike this year.
Yes. The October spike is entirely credited to the Bound Crossing Library, which served as an early polling location for the, for Ada County. And that spike was all the people who came in for early voting and then came in also to the library. We, this, the other thing you'll see, we don't have the slide of it, but there was also a huge spike in people coming in and checking out books, renewing library cards, getting library cards for the first time. So hats off to Bound Crossing for that, that spike for October. Thanks for noticing it.
So the location really played an impact on people coming in and seeing what was available.
Correct.
And then I'm curious about this, and, oh, sorry. Can't see it there, so have to. So I'm really curious. This is fascinating to me, and I do agree that people will, we, we have a, a transportation system in our valley where people drive. So, you know, if you're going somewhere, you're going to go to the nearest. But I don't see people really from the west going to the east or vice versa. What I see is it's kind of clustered around the center of like where, where they live. They're not going through across town? Am I seeing that correctly? I'd like to hear your data analysis on that.
No, I think that's correct, that people are, for the most part, they would be going. I think if we'd pulled that in October, it might have looked different, just based on Bound Crossing. But they are looking for convenience, definitely.
Madam Mayor, Director, I'd just like to piggyback off of that, too, because I think, I, I wonder if our data resources might be able to be leveraged with our partners to have an understanding of how Southwest Boise is using libraries as well, because I kind of see the, you know, the, the density of use throughout the rest of the city, and then it looks pretty sparse there, you know, where, where the connector is and such. So I'd be curious to also see how maybe engagement is looking from what the Ada County perspective in that area, too. I don't know if that's something that's been considered yet.
Councilman Morales, no, that is not the thing we've looked at, but I do think when we started the conversation with our, for facilities plan, I think now it would be a good time to update that discussion about Southwest Boise, because things are certainly evolving there quite rapidly. Thank you.
So two things on that. One is, you know, council just approved a new development with 3,500 homes. So there's all those people, as we look at a facilities plan, that will have an impact on the facilities discussion. But then the other piece, I want to clarify, make sure I understand what you're asking for. Are you wanting to see, instead of those dots that are people living out there coming in, you, you want to see where people living in Boise are going?
Yeah, that's correct. I think, you know, assuming, yeah, as a kid, I lived in Southwest Boise, Incorporated, and so usage of Ada County Community Library, our victory was heavy for me. But curious if there are Boise residents, and while we know there are, but how much their usage is centered on, you know, that, that partnership that we have with Ada, Ada County, at that library? Would be interesting to see where those dots also cross over between city and county resources.
I think that's a really good point. And we, you know, there's the impact on the Garden City Library, there's the impact on the Ada Library. And you're right, this is a, this is a view that's only showing one side of it. I want to talk more about the digital resources. Oh, wow, that's hard to see. Sorry. And there is a bump on this. Let's start with the bump. Councilmember Willetts, because you don't have to ask about this. The, there are two lines here. The lighter blue is the circulation in, or green, I think, circulation, our physical circulation. And the darker blue is our digital circulation. So let's start with the bump. That's July. That is our print circulation. That is summer reading. So we, annually, we will always see a big increase in our summer reading when our kids are, you know, taking advantage of that program. And that's where we see a real increase in our physical circulation. I'm showing this slide to point out to you that in September of this year, for the first time, we saw a significant flip, that starting in September, we are now having more digital checkouts than physical checkout outside of that summer reading bump. We expect this trend to continue. And that change in user behavior has some real implications that I want to talk about first. For this year, for the first time, Boise Public Library will exceed a million digital checkouts. We'll have 1.6 physical item checkouts, but we will have, for the first time, we will have more than a million digital items will circulate. This is driven, almost very strongly driven by the increased use of e-audiobooks and ebooks in our adult collection. It is a digital format that adults find extremely convenient. I don't know how many of you are going, you know, think about your own usage of an audiobook when you are maybe folding laundry or taking your dog for a walk or commuting. We see a very strong connection. It's also a, a format that is very, is much easier to use for some of our aging population that may have lower vis, uh, lower, this, lower vision rates. So they're moving to digital because you can increase a font on an ebook or you can listen to it. Two important pieces to note about that usage. Digital cop, digital use is significantly more expensive than print. And because it's available primarily through a leasing model, we have some real discussions that we have to have internally about, are we purchasing something again? Or are we trying to grow our collection? So the average digital copy is 59% higher than a print copy. So the purchasing power that we have for digital is much more limited. And also the checkout, you know, usually vendors will have a two-year checkout or a certain number of circulations. So we really have to think about carefully what collections we are using for digital based on usage patterns, but also then how do we make sure we're spending our money wisely? And really, as I mentioned, what's driving that increase? As you'll see in this slide, the, the blue is our print circulation, and the orange is our digital circulation, and then the age of those materials. So as you see, it's that adult, the adult usage, that orange is higher. More adults are using digital content. As you look at teens, slightly higher teens, but then that youth, again, the youth are continuing to use print books. And so we're really making sure that we're making sure that we're purchasing items for youth in print, where we're seeing that additional work or that additional usage is really adults in digital. And so part of what we are constantly thinking about is how are we evolving our service model? And really thinking about the usage patterns that we- And really thinking about the usage patterns that we are have now and in the future. And I was before council in the start of the FY25 budget build, where we really wanted to talk about having the capacity to meet the changing needs of our community, but then also really making sure that we're having that impact. This is the new staffing model that we are trying at our Kohl &amp; Eustick location, where we have added an automated book sorter. So our staff are spending less time moving physical materials around, particularly children's books, as I mentioned. But then also really taking advantage of having the opportunities to do programming, to build partnerships, to increase resources. We've put together a list of about 10 metrics that we'll be measuring over time to see that impact. Everything from the increases in program usage, program attendance, what programs we can do in that location, what programs we're able to do outside. We, one of the things we weren't able to meet with the previous staffing model was just the requests for school visits. We're really excited about having additional staff who will be able to be in the community. And that really leads us to the work that we've been doing today. That, with that context of additional, you know, changing usage patterns, additional expectations. What we really have been thinking about is, okay, how are we making sure the facilities we have now are best supporting our users of today? And then how are we thinking about how we grow as Boise continues to grow? So following our strategic plan, one of the things that we heard, our strategic plan was really focused on programs and services. We heard lots of things about facilities. As we did our facility survey, we heard lots of things about programs and services. So it really has been an effort that we are really trying to do to listen to the community. And this facility plan really is to try to shape the next 10 to 20 years. Public Works and Lindsay Urban in particular have been really great partners for us, thinking about, I, I love thinking about programs and services. She loves thinking about roofs. So it's a really good match, really good match. And we contracted with Group Four, which is a consulting firm that has a great experience in helping libraries with strategic planning and facility planning. So we're about, I'd say about a little bit more than halfway through that planning process. I'll talk about sort of what we've done to date. You can see that star, which is the, the conversation that we're having today to really help make sure that the conversations that we'll have, particularly next year with the community, are really making sure that when we have final recommendations or scenarios or potentials, we'll have really good input from everybody. So work done to date, we have done a community scan, really trying to understand what's going on in the changes today in Boise. We've done some of the location and user mapping work, look, started to look at peer benchmarks. We did a staff survey to really understand what's working in our facilities for staff and what's working for what they observe. We did a facility assessment. This is Group Four's second trip. The first trip they came here, they were in every facility, going into every closet and storage room and thinking about flow and where staff are. And then really started to put together some considerations for space needs. And as you can see right now, from the chart on the right, we're in the sort of early, early, early projections about if, if Boise grows this way and library services continue to evolve this way, here might be some recommendations. But everything really is on the table at this point because we are really eager in the conversation that we'll have today. I do want to talk about the community survey. In September, we went out to the community for the public to provide input. What I loved about how the survey was structured is you could provide feedback on the whole system. Or it was a choose your own adventure, then you could pick which location you wanted to provide very specific feedback on. You could do one, you could do two, you could do all five. Most people did, I think, to the earlier point about people wanted to comment on the location they used the most. And what we focused in that was how are you, you know, what allows you access to materials or services or programs? And what hinders that? And so we were thrilled, we had the survey open for about a month and got close to 2,000 people that responded. We got the word out, you know, worked with our CE partners. They put together a great plan of local news outreach, social media promotion. It would not be a survey from the library if it didn't have a bookmark with it. And we had lots of passive, you know, things that when you came into our building, this is a poster that we had up, I think this one was at, maybe Bound Crossing, I'm sorry, can't remember. But every location had them, they had those QR codes, so we knew where people were responding from. And I think we had a really, a, a, a good responses from the community. We looked at it by zip code, making sure that we had good representation from all of our community. And then I wanted to compare this, I think this is important, where we were getting our community survey from our 2022 Strategic Plan Survey compared to the 2024 Facility Plan Survey. Because it was very similar except for one specific zip code, which had significant increase in the participation. And that is the 83713 zip code. The rest of them were within sort of one to two. So that is the West Boise group, and they really did promote the survey. And you could see in the response rates how many more participants from that zip code provided us with feedback. I just want to do a couple highlights from the community survey. This again shows the real consistency and what we're hearing from the community, what the community, our highest needs are in really early childhood literacy and school readiness are important to our community. So we heard that, as I mentioned, strategic planning, we're hearing it again. This is why that summer reading program is so important. This is why our music and movement is so important. This is why so many of the programs and services that we do, we're doing in response to that. Then after that, you see wanting to have areas for teens and tweens, books, media information and spaces to gather. So those are some of the things I think are real important. And going back to that 2022 survey, similar, similar feedback. So again, really wanting to make sure the community knows we're listening and that we're evolving in that response. And then we had a real robust opportunity for people to provide input on what do we want the library to do more of? And this is where we heard programs, we heard gathering spaces, we heard wanting to have connections. And we want to have, you know, places to learn and grow. As I mentioned, we had the opportunity to comment on each of our five locations. And some of those, you know, the, you know, we have the downtown location, it was opened in 1973. The three of our four branches were opened in 2008 and 2009, so really close together. And then our most recent one, Bound Crossing, opened in 2017. So, you know, about 16 years of this branch model. And we're really starting to see people refer to that location as their library. You know, I may have grown up going downtown, but now I bring my children to Collister. Maybe now I take my grandkids to Bound Crossing. So real affinity with the location that they visit the most. And we also have an interesting, where we have three of our five locations are in city-owned facilities. And then two of our locations are storefront rentals in shopping malls. And that'll, you'll hear more about that as we get into more of the specifics. So what we heard that the community values about the library, the dedicated and knowledgeable staff, as a director, that was really heartwarming to me. The recognition of when I come into the building, the staff know my name, the staff know my children's names. They, when we go to storytime, they're so excited to see the staff or this person did a book club. That recognition of the expertise that staff have, the commitment that they have and really their skills was something that was really top of mind. Then the appreciation for having a public space that's, that has free resources. You know, the recognition that this is a community that wants to make sure that everybody has access and opportunity and really does see that the library has a role in making sure that, that things that are, that nothing could be out of reach of somebody economically. They talked about physical and digital materials. That was a fascinating thing to read in comments. Some people like, all, all I want is digital. I want more books, I want more audiobooks. And then other people saying, only want print books. So real, I think we've got omniverse readers who just want more content and more stories. Definitely more programs, more technology. Commitment to youth and education and that development, you're seeing that role, seeing that appreciation. And then really that opportunity for connection. I think particularly some of the neighborhood branches, that recognition of that is the public space in that area and how great it is for us to be able to be together and working on community needs and priorities. And like I said, what the, the library wants from is more space to serve a variety of users and uses. You know, we're starting to see as more people are coming in, there are times when our locations are crowded. And there's particularly places where we're hoping, or the community is hoping that we can have more support for users as a group, so specifically youth and teens. That we don't have a, a real strong teen space in any of our locations, was pointed out. Meeting and study spaces, there are times when people just don't have an ability to meet because there's not a room that's available. Spaces for loud and quiet uses. I think this is particularly apparent at some of our smaller locations, although it does, it also happens downtown, particularly when on Friday night, we have a Taylor Swift party and the karaoke is so loud that you can hear it across the first floor. But that recognition of the music and movement, which has singing and dancing and stomping. If that's right next to someone who is trying to work on a resume or is maybe online doing a job interview, that is a real challenge for those spaces. Outdoor spaces, sensory friendly spaces for people who may need a little bit more support to focus. More materials, technology programs and events. Again, this was a recognition of how much people appreciate the library and really want it to do more. The support for our most vulnerable community members, you know, the recognition of the work that we're doing to support people who maybe experienced a mental health crisis or maybe housing your food insecure. And then the other thing that really came through to me in the community feedback and in the survey was the expectation that we're spending resources wisely. These are tax dollars, there's limited public resources available. So anything that the library is investing in really does need to be well spent in for community impact. And I, I want people who provided that feedback to know how seriously we all take it. There was also some location-specific feedback that I just want to touch on. One was particularly with people who are in our, who use our Collister Library, a real recognition of the opportunity to welcome the Interfaith Sanctuary to that neighborhood and to think about how we're partnering with Interfaith and with other support organizations to serve that community. There was some pretty pointed feedback on the limitations of our storefront rentals with our two smallest locations, Hillcrest and Collister. You know, everything from, I can't find the signage isn't good. You know, I'm not able to do, I'm actually, sometimes I try to find the library and I can't find the library. So things that we are really trying to think about how we evolve those, those smaller locations. And then the downtown library also had some real, really great important feedback. How do we make sure that that is a safe and welcoming space for all users? It's our heaviest, it is our heavily used location, has the most groups coming into it. And then there was also some real important points about, hey, this is, you know, when you think about a downtown library, is it a place where you should really focus on operations or should that be maximized for public usage? And, and how are we thinking about continuing to grow, how we support the downtown community and its changing evolution in the city? All right. So next steps and why we're here today. As we are continuing to digest the community feedback, as we're trying, as we're starting to do some more scenario building with Group Four, we are now at the moment where we're going to use your input. And then in 2025, we'll be doing some community listing sessions. So we did the same thing with our strategic plan. So we'll be going back to the community before we come in with a, a final, with any final recommendations. So we wanted to really make sure that you understood where we were going, understood sort of some of the trends and usage patterns and trade-offs that we're making. But then we are looking to what will we be discussing with the public in 2025? And with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca, who will be leading that discussion to really make sure we've got the input that we need as we go forward.
Thank you, Jessica. I know that's a lot. But it's, it's been incredible to sit with this amount of feedback and we're balancing a lot as a board. So we're thrilled to have your input as well. So for this, we have come up with a few questions. I'm going to start one at a time and go through these. And I really welcome your open, honest, transparent feedback, commentary, questions from both the city council's perspective, as well as my fellow trustees on the Boise Public Library Board. So the first question I would like to pose to you all for consideration, for discussion today, is based on what we've heard about the community priorities from both the strategic plan and what we've gathered so far from the facilities plan and the usage patterns that Jessica has shown you. What should we consider or take into account as we move forward as a library board and as library operations?
I can get us started here. One thing that I've been thinking about a lot, especially after we made a pretty big decision about our pools and moving South Pool closer to Whitney, or closer to Whitney Elementary, where kids could easily walk and access to it, is that we think about geography a lot as far as like distance goes. We don't necessarily think about it from a vulnerable user standpoint. And a lot of our community schools, Garfield, Whitney, Taft, have extremely high percentages of kids who walk and bike to school because they have no other transportation options and because the bus doesn't really run in those areas. So one of the things that I'm hoping that we look at when it comes to location and proximity is that, yes, there are large areas, but like, what are the folk, where are the folks who actually can't get to places via car, via bus, where people actually could walk and get to it? You see this in our parks. You see this, you know, with some pools that we have coming up. You see this with a lot of our schools, these sort of commuter areas, where even if the library is two miles away, like that's not a distance that someone's going to. So from an equity standpoint, and some of our more commuter neighborhoods, just sort of considering that aspect of walkability and bikeability for people who may not have other transportation options.
Madam Mayor, I think along those lines with Jimmy is I kind of think about how, how do we efficiently use resources or gather resources? And so as we were talking about this, I also think about looking at our activity centers when we're looking at spaces. Be it, you know, I think about area by MySpace, like a Spectrum area or commercial areas like Town Square Mall, where we have, our bus system goes today, if we had a location with maybe in the mall or around the mall or nonprofit organizations like the YMCA or the Research Center in West Boise, I think there's a lot of commercial space. I, I can't ever see a need where we would build a library from a ground up, whether it's maybe putting a library next to that pool that we're building. So how do we efficiently use those resources? And the second thing I, I'd like to think about, we talk about literacy and I think we talk about, and there's a lot of different literacy, right? Besides just reading and writing, financial literacy. I think technology literacy is really important for early education as well, looking at robotics and coding. And I hope that we keep that in mind as we're looking at different resources too.
Madam Mayor, I think I'd be curious to, as, as you move forward, kind of understand maybe what the goal is for the system as a whole. So individually, do we want to provide kind of a base level of service for all these different programs for children? You know, teens, adults, seniors. Or there are also opportunities to maybe maximize resources to provide an even elevated level of service, maybe at select locations. And maybe that depends on maybe the makeup of our community, where these different populations are or, you know, what they might find. But, you know, I think kind of looking at that map where we see folks being willing to go to different libraries. And perhaps we would travel across town if we knew that the one across town had a certain type of program, maybe or was known for something. So kind of curious if there might be an opportunity to even elevate programs to an exceptional level, maybe at a specific library. programs to an exceptional level, maybe at a specific library that we couldn't do if we were trying to do that at every library. So be curious kind of what those opportunities might be, if any.
Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you. This is so exciting. It's taken, you know, such a great effort to get here. I'm going to piggyback on the comments of my fellow council members. One of the things that we do so well in Boise is we set a goal and then we work to achieve it. And I, I can't help think about the 10 minute park. People know about that. They talk about that. We have town hall meetings. They're like, you know, I walked to my park, it's seven minutes, or I walked to my park and it's 17 minutes. I mean, they know that that's something that we want to do, that we're investing in every time we can. And I'm wondering, as you think about this, with the ideas of commuters and mobility and tech, is where, not every park is the same, right? Not every library is going to be the same. What is the goal for accessibility? Is it, is it that you can walk there in 20 minutes or is it that you have a 10 minute drive? We have such a diverse geography here, but I think if we had that North Star, then I think we could go from there. And I agree with Councilmember Morales. I think that we know that certain amenities and certain facilities are different. We accept that in our city. I think we need to think about that and embrace that for a library as well. There's going to be a baseline, but there will be certain specialities in different libraries. And I think that gives us an opportunity to really lean in on those. So my ask would be, give us, give us a goal and then let us work towards it.
Madam Mayor, Director, I can just piggyback to the, the kind of the viewpoint I'm coming from is as in parks, there's a handful of different parks that our family would go to depending on what we want to do that day, right? Or we go to two different pools during the summer depending on kind of, you know, one has a bigger slide than the other, right? And so kind of wondering, you know, if our library system has that as well, or perhaps could elevate certain experiences if, if kind of taking that into account and depending on what our resources are and what our the opportunities are in different neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Very close. Thank you, council members. This is incredibly great feedback. One of the things that I know is that I've been able to sit through a much more deep operational conversations with the library, but something I'm attuned to is this desire for stewardship. You all have mentioned that using our resources wisely and I appreciate that. And that's something that we've been taking very seriously. So I'm curious, as you all go about in your conversations at the city, thinking about stewardship and the need to continue to grow is are there additional resources within the city that the library could also partner to tap into? We know there's a growing desire for more people, more places. So having to balance a desire for new with are we stewarding existing resources? And how can we do that with the best of our ability, given the resources that we currently have? So I would ask you, are there additional city resources that we haven't tapped into that we could better utilize to reach more folks?
Madam Mayor, I, I think of that question even more broadly is are there more community resources? And one thing that I hear over and over in our side of town is we need a place to gather. We want, we, we don't have an identity like a lot of other places in, in the city. And I'm wondering what we could do from a public school perspective with facilities there. I mean, we've got two great school districts in the city of Boise. You know, is there a way that we can, we can do that? Is there a way we can look at other centralized services? And to counsel a member of Corliss's point, I think given the cost structure and the efficiency, is there a way we can use what's existing today? Even at the state level to help us with this goal? Versus trying to go from scratch. I think our population obviously wants more access. How do we do that the most efficiently? With, with all of government, not just the city, because we, we have to partner with everybody.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, two things there. One, what Councilmember Corliss already brought up, and that's our transit lines and our plans for transit. And making sure that we're incorporating that to our thoughts. Again, trying to figure out all the different types of people who we want to be able to use the facility and making it truly accessible. We know where some of those transit lines, our main priorities already are. And we sort of know where some of those may be in the future and positioning them around those, well, I think makes a lot of sense. And then speaking to a couple of the bullet points that we're on here for services for teens and tweens, the city does a really, really great job at offering lots of services and programs for youngsters. Our community centers, all sorts of different places they can go. Our teens and tweens don't have a lot of access to those same spots. And so looking really at our junior highs and our high schools and proximities in those locations, I think is important as well. Because those kids are going to get done with school and they're going to go somewhere. And it would be great if one of those places was a library or some form of community center rather than, you know, playing around in the backyard, getting into trashcans, which is what I would have done when I was their age. So like, trying to make sure that we're co-locating those services, those resources and some of those plans. The city's already engaging in a, a youth action plan. I don't think we've arrived on the name of it quite yet. But making sure that we're having those conversations at the same time, where are the kids already at? And how can we make sure that they can get to these spots very easily, knowing that they're probably some of the ones who don't have control of their transportation?
There are a couple of things that came to mind for me, and I'd be curious to hear too from library trustees about, you know, the conversations that you've had, or if you haven't had them, the things that you've been thinking about as you've reviewed this data. But when we think about facilities, and I saw in here that there are some that we currently have that aren't big enough to offer the programs that matter. So better understanding across the whole thing, how to address those needs as well. You know, I saw on here that, well, yes, we have a lot of kid programs, most people, young kid programs, most people are asking for more early reading prep, early childhood prep. So how do we do that better? So we're talking about facilities, but we're hearing a lot about program. And then if in adults, and we have to have a budget discussion about how we continue to support this digital, or if we do at the level of growth that it is because of the costs. But I'd be curious to know then if we're seeing in this that more adults are using the digital, I don't know how that compares to how many books adults actually check out. But from a spacing perspective, is there a better way to use our space for kids and all the other programs that have come out? Then for, you know, I like to wander the stacks and look at books, but I don't know how many people really do, right? So those are the types of things I would like to make sure that we're thinking about and addressing when we talk about programs and facilities overall. But curious and would be love to pull in some trustees and then I'll head back to council.
I'll jump in in the sense that the redesign of the main library, the thinking was to make this space as flexible as possible, understanding that in the future there may be less need for stacks and the growth of, of the usage in the tweens and, and teens and children's area, you know, the idea of less, you know, hard walls and more ability to, oh, we need this area to grow or at least grow for this particular series of programs we're going to do and then shrink it back or move the, the books into a different area. That, that's certainly been part of the thinking in terms of the design.
Madam Mayor, I could offer a couple of comments. I did want to speak a little bit to the branch libraries, just a little piece that maybe doesn't show up in the statistics that I noticed touring the libraries is that they're very responsive to kind of the local surrounding community. And they're each very different. So kind of speaking to Councilmember Morales' point about can each one kind of have different programming specific to the needs, like Colister has a seed library, for example. So anyway, I think that's one question I'd like to understand and just be mindful that the branch libraries are really, I think, been successful. And then I don't know how much we can ask our facilities folks to really look at, I think, Colister and Hillcrest and the challenges there with the space specifically. Because I, I do think that's a real challenge as I think those are both really busy, vibrant spaces with some just physical structural facilities limitations we need to deal with to continue to improve those. And I think I had one other thought that I've lost, but I will come back.
Councilmember Morales? Did you have something?
Yeah, I think just-
And then Corliss?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Director, I think in terms of city resources too, and I think there's already some partnership with our Dick Erdely Senior Center, but thinking about, you know, same conversation with teens and tweens, these communities that may struggle more with social isolation and needs to have that third place. Or maybe it's a second place because you're retired, you don't have a workplace anymore, to be able to connect with people that over fun interests or things. I know our senior center does some really great programming, but it's in one part of town too. And so that, I think that may be a city resource that could be leveraged if it's not already.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to follow up with Nicole on one of the comments on the, for the branch libraries and the space constraints. Are we seeing the concern as the, the physical size of the space or the deterioration of the space or not having full access to what you can do there?
Thank you, Council Corliss, Madam Mayor, President Lemmons. I wonder if Lindsay would have good comments, but I think it's all of the above, in particular at one of those branches.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council trustees. I think the issues with Hillcrest and Colister mostly stem from square footage and the amount of space. And then we're limited in what we can do with our people we're leasing from as far as parking concerns, salt and parking lots, repairs and maintenance, that type of thing. We're not as responsible for those in our leased properties. So ideally owning property would be more advantageous. And the facility plan is definitely speaking to the square footage needs that we're looking at.
I had, Madam Mayor, I had two things I wanted to offer. The first is that we've got this new law that we're dealing with. And as it relates to the open concept of our libraries, it really presents a challenge for trying to segregate materials by age because it's open, people can wander everywhere. And the second part of trying to govern books by age or age group is in our system, we don't really know how old people are. It's not something you capture when you issue a library card, a date of birth or something like that. So I think the open concept is an asset. It's also a bit of a disadvantage if we're going to try and segregate or provide some sort of access limitation based on age. Just thought I'd throw that out. And I also wanted to remind the council that both the Board of Trustees and the council have been petitioned by a West Boise group for having a library branch closer to them. And our answer when they came to petition us was, we're working on it. We've got a lot of data we're pulling together and we're making a plan and we'll see how all this turns out. And of course, they said, can't we have something while we're waiting for that? Can't we have something temporary? Like Hillcrest or Colister that you implement quickly and we get started and then you can fill in the blanks and provide a better solution once your strategic planning work is done. So I just wanted to remind about those two things so they don't get lost from our site as we discuss this.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Appreciate, Kenny, I appreciate that. And I do want to thank our great staff and legal and board members for working through the open space challenges and finding ways to navigate and follow the rule of the law and still provide equal access to materials for children and adults. With that, I'm going to move to the second question, which I think we've touched on a bit in some of your comments, but I'll ask it anyway in case it generates additional thoughts for you all. As we continue to contemplate future service models and how we want to reach out, what are our goals for civic buildings and neighborhood services? In addition to what you've already provided.
Madam Mayor, I am hearing about the need for access and using existing resources and the parks were mentioned that many of our residents have a 10 minute walk to a park. I think that there was, I mean, this is, this might already be happening, but I think that at one point there was a mobile library, mobile book program. But I wonder if that with the, with this extra space we need, if that's something that could see a resurgence with delivering programming to parks when the weather is good and maybe even, you know, certainly books, but maybe even some of that digital support. Showing folks how to access the digital libraries and things like that. Might offer some kind of extension of space and programming opportunity in those warmer months.
Madam Mayor, President, can I make one little comment kind of in response to that? I wonder if there's a couple of existing programs that made me think of, and one is we did do a lot of programs in the parks in partnership with Parks and Rec. And I think there were even some like access issues getting across like State Street, for example. But wonder about how best those could be leveraged or expanded. And then the other thing that came to mind is our home-based services, which is like kind of a little fraction piece of that and what challenges there might be or costs or how, and if that kind of could be leveraged to expand to more what you're referencing there. So just some thoughts that might be good to include in our analysis.
Madam Mayor, President. Just listening to the conversation and thinking about like future service models, I, I think it's difficult for us to predict in 20 years how our libraries are going to be used. I think if we had like 20 years in the past, we may not have expected the different ways that libraries have used and changed. I mean, even since COVID, it's, that's changed and it's put different pressures on our labor force at the library. I, I think like what has happened at Colister and Hillcrest, like we have problems, but there are problems that have been created out of demand. And I think it shows that what we did in those places was right and good. And that it was so popular that we're, we're bursting at the seams in those places. I, as I think about future facilities coming online, I don't want us to overcorrect about how we might feel today about the problems at Hillcrest or Colister and feel the need to do brand new 20,000 square foot facilities day one, because what I see is opportunities, we have not made a huge capital investment at those places. We've had library services for 15 plus years. We have the flexibility to quickly move to a larger place that we might not have had we invested seven, eight figures into capital resources at a place like that. So I, I want the board and council and the public to wrestle with the trade offs of those different types of spaces. Because if you brought to council an eight-figure capital plan in a year or two, saying we would like X facility for X number of dollars, I would say does the community want that resource sooner? And maybe in a, in a way that's a little less than our, our highest hopes and dreams, but could deliver services for 10 years prior to when we could get a big capital plan like that off the ground. So I would just want those, those trade offs to be considered.
Thank you.
I was just going to jump in on two things that have been brought up. One is this, this idea of advanced or specialized services at certain locations. And the tension between that and the conversations about proximity and ability to have access for everybody and such. So that's one sort of tension line that we got to sort of think through. And the other is just this idea of technology literacy and more and more of our services being delivered via digital services. And just knowing the cost, not just for, to, to acquire, you know, digital versions of a book or something, but the underlying technology refresh that has to happen, you know, every few years and the, and the speed at which that technology refresh needs to happen is a cost that we need to be conscious of. It isn't the old days where you buy a book and it's good for 25 years and it sits on the shelf or it doesn't, it's, you know, until it physically wears out. Now you've got this constant refresh of the, of the website and the newest versions of whatever software it's being used. And the licenser wants you to have this and instead of that, it's just something we need to keep in mind as we think through the budgeting moving forward.
Madam Mayor, yes. Yeah, I think that's, that's an interesting point. Thank you for bringing that up because while I'm thinking about the cost of the digital book, I'm not thinking about the cost of the, the overall platform. and how much it needs to be refreshed, which kind of makes me think about our Parks and Recs programs. How sometimes some of our programs, they're at a cost. We'd love them all to be free, but there's a cost associated with it. And I wonder if we ever entertained a cost, a minimal cost associated for adults, maybe that literacy program. I think about the Libby app and the ebooks and it is a wonderful program. Would people be willing to pay a minimal, maybe monthly subscription for that? And like our Parks and Recs program, maybe we have some scholarships wrapped around that, I think. The other thing I want to think about is community, that community space that's being used in our libraries today, being able to reserve those conference rooms, I think is a wonderful advantage in our community that a lot of different organizations use. I don't know what the availability conference rooms are in those libraries. I imagine the usage rate is pretty high. That would be something I hope that we're all thinking about as we're looking about our facilities plan going forward.
Madam Mayor, two, two things. One, a little weedy. We also mentioned in, in a lot of the feedback from folks that we haven't talked about here as much is the outdoor space component, thinking about building upon the walkability, bikeability, the access to transit, particularly as we're thinking about some of the smaller branch libraries and opportunities we may have reviewing leases or not. I am deeply interested in this connection to outdoor space. We know that that's a big part of Boise values and we have a lot of great resources. So I love your comments about Parks and Rec and thinking more deeply about how we can ensure that we have some indoor/outdoor, even though one might presume library is indoor reading, it's, it's really not. So that's just something top of mind for me to speak out loud here. And then two, again, building on what trustee Pizanowski mentioned is flexibility. I think that's top of mind for us at every future discussion is how can we literally have more physically movable resources in all of our locations so that we can continue to flex and grow with programming? And whatever the future may bring with whatever kinds of resources we may physically be providing in our spaces. So just know that that is kind of a top key priority word for us is flexibility inside, outside. And with the programs and services we're able to provide. With that, I'm going to move us on to our last question. And this question is open for everyone, but I'm intentionally looking at our city council members for their input. As Director Dor mentioned, we are moving into a open listening session space where we as board members will be going out and attending and participating alongside our contractors in listening sessions across communities to hear directly from folks what they would like to see in terms of this facility plan. So from everything you've heard today and from your perspectives, what would you want to make sure that we are asking and including in these discussions with community? To make sure that we are getting the best possible recommendations and feedback directly from our community members? What should we be asking them?
Madam Mayor, President. I think you're already doing it by the questions that I've heard today and the things that you're talking about it. You're approaching this issue in ways that I would hope you are. You've already touched on some of the organized community effort that I think we should, we should see that as an organic thing that's happened in the community and how we deal with that, respond to that and meet those needs. Additionally, I think of an experience that Lucy and I had this year where we had our first, we tried to bounce back and forth between the districts for our town halls. And we had, our first town hall was at Golden Ustick and we had 50 people there. And it was great. And we expected the same thing at the second one in Lucy's district. And we went to the fire training center and which is almost an eagle. And we had two people. So I've already heard you touch on it today, but this idea of like an identity and what people are looking for to have a tie to their neighborhood, their community. As Councilmember Morales said, that third place, really probing out why people want a space that the, that the city might create in their neighborhood. And, but I, I think you're already asking those questions, but I just want to say thank you and keep up the good work on that. This isn't going to come out smoothly. I think people are looking for, they're looking for a space, they're looking for a space in their neighborhood. And I think that maybe we should ask ourselves, is that a library or is that something different? Because what you're hearing from people is that they, they want us to focus on early learning. They want to focus on literacy. They want us to focus on connections. We're sort of asking the library to do a lot of different things. And I think sometimes people are just, they're wanting a place where they can sit down and maybe look at a book, look at their computer, have a meeting, have a conversation with someone else. And that could be a library, it could be a coffee shop, it could be a variety of different things. And I think even as more people are working at home and things are changing, they're still looking for these spaces where they can go. Maybe that's a library, maybe it's something else. I don't know. And I'm interested to know what people want, where they want to go, what they want to do, you know, when they, when they get there. And my guess is that there's a lot of unpredictability of will things move over to digital, will there be books? But the thing that won't change is that people will want a gathering space. And people want to have an opportunity to meet and collaborate with each other. And to me, that's another core aspect of the library. And so is it a library full of books? Is it all these things? Is it a place where people can go and they can convene and it's a gathering spot? And there's other services can be offered. I think we're asking for people to think of a traditional library to do so many different things. And I think that that's always going to be a challenge, especially when you're sticking them in an old shopping center. You know, if we're building something from scratch, we probably have the ability to meet those needs a little bit more. But I guess that's the kind of the question that I sort of keep getting to is that like, are people asking for a library? Are they asking for a place to go? And are there different ways of combining some of those services that we have at the city to do it?
Madam, Madam Mayor, President. I, you know, these are such dynamic services and challenges. And I think that libraries garner a lot of emotion. And as you start in these listening sessions, I think it would be difficult not to get caught up in some of the, some of that emotion and the urgency that people might be feeling for a solution. And I would urge you, I guess, to fall back on the data that you have too with those, to support those stories. And, you know, and remember, you know, remember that people are generally willing to travel and that there, you know what I mean, to kind of lean back on some of that data that you have. Because I think that is really interesting and that will help guide those conversations, I think. And, and the emotional stories that you might hear in those listening sessions can, can add to that, the kind of robustness of that data and the stories. But, but you have some really great data, I think that can also help drive those decisions.
Madam Mayor, President. As I think about, yeah, what would we like for the community to explore is that concept of the bookmobile again? I think it's so flexible. It was such a great idea. I don't know why we moved away from that, but I think that should be explored. I think it's a great way to partner with a park to say we're going to be somewhere and or just various locations. I keep thinking, well, with our food trucks and with the Boise farmer market being mobile, it could maybe tie into that as well. I'd also like us to really consider the West Boise and how can we serve them? And what's a good way, what's that best way or a way that they can be serviced? Something we've heard about for years. And then I don't know how, but how to do an outreach to our youth and what would they like to see? I think as parents, we always think what we want. I'd love my kids to be at the library, reading books all the time, but they're not. So I don't, I don't know how we can reach them where they're at and see what they would like to have. Thank you. And thank you very much for all of your work. I really appreciate it.
Well, I'll try to use a little bit of an overview of through lines that I heard and kept track of today. And if it, we've got a couple of minutes, so if anything else comes up, please don't hesitate to jump in. I want to thank you, President Lemmons, for guiding this today. Really well done. And Jessica, for your presentation. I'm going to try to go kind of question by question with a couple of through lines that I heard. And in that first one, and this will be wrap up, so staff will start to look more into it and it'll help guide the steps that library team takes with their consulting team to allow this conversation today to help shape the next stage of the facilities planning. And but a couple of things that I heard in that first question was, you know, the ask that a goal for service be established and what that really looks like. I think that is important. On location, especially since this is a facilities plan, I heard folks throughout, we should be looking at how it overlays with activity centers, colocation of other, other gathering places, resources. And the, the kids that are, that would be served and the demographics and their needs so that we're understanding where people can get by car and where people can't get that way. The discussion about a focus or specialty area for libraries was of interest to folks today. On the resources, and I appreciate that question back because that is, it's a real thing. In the past, the city has put library bonds out for a vote and they don't, they don't pass. And that's the additional resource that this city might have. And so there, it's, it's one thing to like dream and envision what you want. And another thing to say, yes, citywide, we'll pay for it. And so because of that, I'd say I would imagine that some of that shaped what I heard today from council, which is looking at existing buildings as potential partnerships. So schools, associated libraries that are part of that system that we have with this, and also look at the state that we should be looking at colocation and other ways of partnership beyond looking at kind of the schools, our associated library partners in the state for resources. On future service, a couple of things to follow up on, appreciate the call out for true cost. Because it is, it's not just that, you know, I don't know what it costs, but let's say a digital copy is 10 bucks. It's not that, that's not the end cost. There's all the wraparound costs related to that, that. And, and we have said as the council, it didn't come up today, but I'm just going to bring it up because it ties back to this true cost. Is in this facilities plan, it's not just the cost of the facility. It's the cost of the things that go in the facility, the cost of the people that make the things possible. And as you mentioned, the back office kind of technology costs as well. So I'm needing to have a, a true accounting of what any future plans would look like that would then help us figure out how we pay for those in the law and then how long it takes to do that. Have flexibility in terms of service and space came up a couple of times. And then the importance of like community connection and cohesion came up in the service discussion, but also in like the questions that the council would like to ask you to ask the community. And in the kind of flexibility, also there's the question of trade off. So is it a special building or is it the flexibility that a walk-up retail location provides in terms of being able to change things up? And then finally, what I heard from council in terms of what they'd like to hear the community answer in addition to everything that the, the library is planning on asking is, you know, why people want that space? What is it that they're truly looking for in that? And, and to drill down into whether it's because they want to pick up a book or they want to have a community connection, or they just want to go sit someplace and maybe run into people or read something. Or they want particular services. And I'd say that that also then loops back to the question of do we specialize in where and how? I heard a discussion about the combination of services. So what combines with what, where? And then the call out to figuring out a way, and this is beyond asking young people what they want. But I'd add on to that of figure out a way to how to actually hear from young people in what they want. What, and kind of point back to some of these partnerships that have come up, whether it be through the schools, through our youth leadership committees, other recreation programs, et cetera, to make sure that we're hearing from young people too. And I just can't, I can't stop thinking really, and I'll, I took notes from everybody, so I'll leave this with you. Going back to that digital piece and the service needs, adults are using digital, but they aren't having their kids use digital. So that to me is really interesting. So while we've seen this spike in adult usage of digital and I only, I use digital as like the last resort. If I'm traveling and I'm worried about weight and I want to take a couple of books, things like that, like I, I look for books. But I, I hear all the time that there's, that there are many people that listen to books, which you and I've had that conversation. I've never considered that reading, but people that listen to books consider it reading. And I was intrigued when I heard that the first time. I was like, huh. And I think about that often. The, and then the use of digital materials, but those adults that are, have driven that spike in digital usage haven't driven a spike in young people's usage. So there is, and I, I'd drill into that a little bit too, or it would be a request as we think about how we create community cohesion, gathering spaces when we hear that people want that, that we meet the needs of our residents. And I, I would, I would posture that that need for early childhood ed, reading support, et cetera, will always be there. Especially since we aren't seeing the switch from digital usage in adults driving digital usage in kids. They're still looking for something. And I would imagine that that would stay. So how we are able to incorporate the program goals that the community has with the convenient cohesion desires that we're hearing and drilling more into those questions that council has asked about what and why and where to really be able to paint a picture of how we best meet the needs, expectations, and ultimately the reality of funding to meet those with, with this plan and moving forward.
Madam Mayor, I do think that in the adult, you said some of our heaviest users of the library never set, put in the building. They are using the digital content. And I do think that is where they are losing that sense of community. They're not running into a friend in the stacks. They're not seeing a resource, a flyer for a resource, but I would be remiss if I didn't. E-audiobooks are absolutely reading. I'm a professional librarian. I just want to make sure that everyone who reads
book nerd, which is what it came up for me.
Can put them, but this, this is my professional opinion. If you are reading books through e-audio, you are absolutely reading. If anyone doubts that, you can send them directly to me. I will explain that to any family member necessary. There's amazing audio. People that actually, we have readers that will choose books based on who reads the book or is it an ensemble task? It is a really robust medium and it is 100% reading.
Madam Mayor, this sounds a lot like is an e-bike, a bike kind of a conversation. And I agree, it is, it is a bike. I, I want to put, I agree with everything that you outlined and thanks for putting that together so nicely and capturing all of our thoughts, especially mine that tend to go in different directions. One thing I just, I want to put just a slightly harder point on. I want people to know what the limitations are from having a facility that we lease. And I, I understand that's probably a sensitive conversation to have, but I also think that we should make sure that we're being very transparent of these are the barriers and the limitations when we lease something. And this is the cost difference. And so for people, and I think the mayor brought this up, it's balancing. Like we could spend a lot of money and get this thing and have all these other things where we could get this. But I think that people really need to know what the differences are between those, what we would not have if we went this route versus what we would have. And I think that there's a probably ability to just better articulate those real barriers. I mean, when I go to Hillcrest, I can't find a place to sit outside the building or place to park my bike. And you don't have the ability to put in a bench to welcome people into the space. It's like, this is a very small example, but it's an example of us building a facility that welcomes somebody in versus the limitations, but then also the cost benefits. So having those clearly articulated, I think will be really important for people in helping them weigh those decisions.
Madam Mayor, President, talk to us a little bit about the timeline and when we'll, when we can expect to get feedback and how that fits into the budget and just give us some clarity on that.
Yeah. And that's a great wrap up. So I'll thank, I won't say anything after. Thank you all for the time, the rich discussion, the guidance. And a timeline of what's next is a great way to wrap things up.
Thank you. We are meeting later today, actually with our community engagement team. Now that we have this feedback, we'll be able to put together our plan for that public outreach in 2025. One of the things I learned in the facilities plan is to make sure we're being really thoughtful about when we're going out to the community. But we're hoping, you know, sort of that February, March timeframe. But do know that there's a lot of other city conversations, so we are going to really. So we are going to really not, we are going to try to find a time where we're not conflicting with other community conversations. But really then that would give us sort of that May timeframe to have really more of that, to be able to come back to and say, like, here's what we hear from the community with more that next level of input and analysis.
All right. I don't think we take a motion to adjourn because.
I, I withdraw any future motion to adjourn.
But the library might need to. Thank you all. We, we are back, city council is back at noon for our ongoing meeting.
Yes, trustees, may I please request a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.